Alrighty, good evening. This is Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. That cat you decided to show tonight or anything that you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever and may possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that members of the board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach?
Here.
Carolyn McDonald?
Here.
Thomas Andrew?
Here.
And with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-two P M, uh, Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the, due to the outbreak of COVID-nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they have concluded their remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or emotions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation.
Did we miss Tim Wheeler?
Uh, he has another meeting that will wrap up around eight fifteen and he said he will join us as soon as he possibly can.
Got it.
But he intends to be, uh, here tonight. Uh, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting?
Still moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Thomas Andrew?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Do we have any other?
Yes.
We do.
I'd like to make a motion to pay Column Software one hundred and nine dollars and fifty-six cents for two notices regarding public hearings published in the item.
What is it? Hundred and nine dollars and?
Fifty-six cents.
Fifty-six and what is it for?
Uh, public hearing notices in the item.
Was that in the item?
That's, I think so. Yeah, the item.
Ah, cause Tim-
By Column Software P B C.
Cause Tim sent me Column Software P B C-
Yeah.
For the item.
Yeah.
And it was a hundred and nine fifty, oh, a hundred and nine fifty-six. I'm sorry. I, 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 I wrote it down as a hundred and fifty-nine fifty-six. Sorry, same thing.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the, the bill to the item for a hundred and nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Thomas Andrew?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, so Jay, do you have a warrant for this or are you going to, we're gonna Faust this on Tim to run around and send it to the appropriate parties?
Well, Tim is really good at it.
Hmm?
Tim is really good at it.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with.
Yeah, I think I actually already signed one when I dropped off the, the plan. Um, so he's probably got a leg up on it.
Okay, good. Um, speaking of which, where is that plan? I never signed it.
Uh, Mr. Wheeler must still have it. I went to his house on, I went to his house on Thursday and signed it.
Okay.
Wednesday or Thursday. Oh, Wednesday.
Hmm.
Yep, and I, I picked it up from Jay, signed it and dropped it off at Tim's, so it, it truly is at Tim's at this point.
Okay, cause he had told me that he didn't have it, so.
Uh, no, I know he has it and there are four signatures on it at this point, so.
Right, and I do know the applicant is looking for it.
I'm sure he is.
Yeah, we gotta find a better way to do this. I'm not sure what it is. Um, we have one other item. This is a very important one.
Yes.
Uh, do we want the Solomon, Solomon Pond Mall plans that were found at the library?
Do we want them?
Sure, let's, let's get them and take a look at them.
Yeah?
Right, they should be in our files anyway.
We should have a copy down there.
Yeah.
I would think.
Think so.
And if not, then we should have those ones, yeah.
Yeah, there, there, there should be multiple copies. I'm sure they were like put around town so people could review them.
Yeah.
Yes, we should, we should take it back just to make sure that our co- our copy's current.
Well, we wanna get them out of circulation so they have more value on Antique Roadshow someday.
There you go.
Um, we could ask that they be dropped off with D and somebody and then put them in the files. I could do that next time I get the mail, but in this one, that may be.
Your microphone is having issues tonight, Jay.
Oh, is it?
Sounds like you're across the room.
I thought he was across town.
Really? Let me see what's going on with that. Microphone, huh? Is that any better?
Hmm, say something else.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, you might just need to speak up a little bit.
Okay. So I'll, I'll see if we can get the plans delivered maybe to D and next time I'm down there, I'll try to put them in there. I'm not sure where, but in that big room with all the file cabinets.
They could put it on top of the, the filing cabinet for the planning board and then we can take and figure out, cause we have separate, I believe that they're in the flat files down at the end of the room. Uh, and they may be in the, they may be in the far corner or two. Um, we have a filing cabinet that's dedicated just to Solomon Pond.
Oh, you know, I think I saw that, yeah.
But the filing cabinet that has the A and Rs and it doesn't have anything, well, last time I was down, they didn't have anything on the top of it, so they could put it, certainly put it there. And it's pretty easy to identify because it has our name on the front of it.
Got it.
Any other goodies in our mailbox?
Uh, no.
No.
Nope. Lots of stuff, but nothing I think you'd be interested in.
Okay.
Except Mark's, uh, A and R. Um, we were supposed to review the use chart at the next meeting.
Well, I, um, I got that from Tim, but I haven't had a chance to, uh, fully look at it. I guess I didn't see that, I didn't realize we were gonna do it at this meeting and not the next one.
Looks like it will be the next one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the other topic was, uh, I had put on the agenda was, do we wanna have, is there anything we need to do to prepare for the public hearing? On the warrant articles that's coming up?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing that, that, I mean, we get, we, we got the, we get three, if there's three, right? So two of them are pretty, um, self-explanatory and I don't really think we should debate them or talk about them too much here because I, you know, we should allow a, a public forum part of it. Uh, but there is one that we should probably talk about is that, that, um, misidentification of that one citizen's position and what kind of problems that may cause us downstream.
What do you mean misidentification?
So isn't there a reference to map and parcel block that's incorrect?
Yeah, that is correct. It is incorrect.
Oh, I was unaware.
Okay. So, and we think we're pretty safe if we introduce a asterix to this or a footer sub stating that it was a typo or misidentification and this is the correct language and have it go all the way through, or are we gonna wind up in a pickle down, further down?
My- Well, there's been some email exchanges about that and I think ultimately as, I remember them, it is up to the moderator. I think the moderator indicated that he was open to a correction.
Okay.
And I think there have been suggestions as to form, but my own feeling is that we should ask town council about that solution, cause I'm, I guess I'm happy to do that, but I, I'd wanna be sure if we go through those hoops and spend the time in a public hearing and then spend the time at town meeting, that, uh, the town council has some assurance that the Attorney General is going to accept it, because to me, it's a really significant issue. You know, I mean, it doesn't identify the, the plot of land. It's not incidental or a misspelling. Um, I understand it's a mistake. Um, so I think my, my own feeling is, and I'm, I'm glad we brought this up at the meeting, that we should, we should, um, we should suggest that before we have the, uh, Planning Board meeting, that town council review the issue and the proposed solution and get a sense for whether they feel that the A G would find that to be acceptable.
Did you read the, the, um, the email exchange from town council, Tom?
I don't think I saw that one. What did they say?
Okay, uh, I, I'm trying, I don't have it in front of me, but basically they had stated that, um, they felt that if the, if the moderator was willing to accept an amendment or if it was, if he was willing to accept, okay, but then-
I saw that, yeah.
Further on, further down that email exchange said that she felt that that would be reasonably looked upon by the state attorneys general, but they, they wouldn't opine on it prior to having the decision or having the, the, the town meeting. Which I kinda thought, thought, hmm, that leaves the door open.
Yeah, um, maybe we should get clearance to have a conversation with them to get, um, to see if we can get any more clarity on that, because as I say, I think that's a designation of the parcel of land in a way that is accurate in the notice is so essential to a motion. And the fact that we have limited ability to amend the citizen's petition, this is not unlike a board petition. I mean, those two things to me tells me we, we can't put it to town meeting and I, I, you know, I understand the I, and did look at the emails, but, um, I hate to waste that kind of time and discussion and energy on something that's just gonna be kicked back.
I kind of agree with you and, and when I saw it, I'm like, oh boy, this is bigger, bigger issue than just a, a mere typo or a mere what have you. And the fact that, you're right, the fact that we're not in care, custody, control of this, um, makes it even more, more challenging.
The, the other thing that, uh, that wasn't mentioned in that, that I think is, 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 uh, is something we should be aware of is that that land has the attraction of uh, other entities. And so if, if we were to do something that was questionable and it turned out to be unfavorable to the interests of others who are interested in the land, there's exposure to complications in that regard as well. So, and, and nothing was really said about that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the, that property is gonna be owned by somebody different in like two weeks.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yes, yep, absolutely, um.
So can a citizen's petition change the zoning of a piece of property that somebody else owns?
Yes, yes, yes.
We could rezone your property to limited business.
Hey, cut it out.
Ha, 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 have, have, have the industry in nuclear waste.
There you go.
Yeah.
Much better, much better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
So just watch yourself, Carolyn.
I, I have been warned.
So that's, that's, that's the danger of, um, you know, the power of this or the, or the, the fact that this could go off the rails fairly fast is that it is significant and it can change the designation of somebody's property. So that should have all the i's, c, i's dotted and t's crossed.
Yep. I would also say, and we could ask town council about this, that we certainly after our hearing, we could consider the form and the error in the, uh, citizen's petition and make that a part of our report. So if we've, for instance, found it was deficient and that was a major reason for, for instance, uh, you know, not recommending it, we can, we can record that in our, um, or, or if we find otherwise, I mean, that, but we could certainly record that in our, um, in our report. Which is why I maybe wanna have a conversation with town council before we have that meeting or maybe after we have the public meeting and before we issue the report, but at some point I'd love to have a little bit of a follow-up with them on that.
Is that something that you can chat with, um, um, town?
Administration. Yeah, yeah, I can do that. I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
You could run with that and ask her if it's okay to talk to town council.
Yep, I don't think it's, it's a long conversation.
No, no, but it would be wise for us to get the opinion before we go off the rails on, uh, the ninth of April.
Yep. All right.
Um, regarding the other two, the over fifty-five one's pretty straightforward and it's like the third round on it anyways. But the other one is gonna be pretty controversial. We should maybe talk about how we communicate and get some support for that between now and, uh, town meeting. Carolyn's new live video sign.
Well, I'm gonna keep everybody on a short leash, cause we're not gonna have a, you know, we can discuss it. I don't have a problem with that, but it's, we're having a public forum and a public meeting about it, so um, we're not gonna make any decisions or anything like that, cause we don't have a wide enough audience. That's what I'm afraid of.
But I was looking for was, are there, what else can we do other than the public hearing to try to communicate what's up with that, because it's definitely controversial and it's very hard to get people's attention in town.
Well, judging by the audience, we've gotten some attention.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Well, obviously, we, we're going to issue a report. Um, I would think that interested parties would attend the public hearing. And if they do, I suspect we'll, you know, we'll have, um, facts and presentations that would be supportive or not of the arrangement. I mean, we we were kind of doing this as an accommodation to other towns. I mean, the, the Planning Board is not gonna be, you know, putting up, uh, messages on those, uh, on those signs, um.
What about our surveys and that kinda thing?
Running text.
Ten percent of the town respond to our survey.
Yeah, okay. My own feeling is it's best to talk about that as we, you know, issue our report and how we put the report out.
What, what is, what's the report? That's after the hearing?
It's after the hearing and in the hearing, we report the vote to recommend or not to recommend, and then there's a brief narrative or not of, or a longer narrative if we wish, um, indicating, uh, why.
And that goes in the warrant or where does that go?
It's getting reported at town meeting.
Yeah. Isn't it, isn't it attached to the annual town report? No, no, it's just, no, you're right. It's just reported. The vote is just reported.
Right.
Yeah.
But the warrant goes out ahead of the town meeting, right? To everybody?
Right.
Warrant goes out before, but that'll have the, the, the text of the, of the proposal, the proposed warrant.
But does it have our report also?
Nope, the report gets recorded at town.
Write up, right?
When we bring up, when you go, you know how you have a little slip of paper and everybody, we divvy it all up? And you say, Mr. Moderator, I make a recommendation on, or I present to you this, whatever article it is, on such and such a date, Planning Board had a hearing, we voted X to X uh, that we support or not support, whatever article it is. And then he'll say, is there any explanation? Do you wanna say anything about this article? And that's when you can say, I do, this is what we wanna do, blah, 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 blah.
Uh, Eloise has her hand up.
Okay.
And Eloise?
Um, whatever, your report also goes to the Attorney General. That's partly why I need it in writing.
Yes.
In, next to each one of the warrant articles in the booklet that we get in the mail, there's a write-up. Where's that come from?
Uh, the town administrator, um, if you say that's, you know, this is our article, we wanna talk about it. Fine, submit a summary.
Oh, and it will be written, it'll be published in the warrant?
It could be.
Uh-oh.
The problem is, it might be, it might be a, a publishing problem with the timing of your public hearing. The booklet might already be printed.
Yeah.
The word-
When is the deadline? Do you know?
I believe it's in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks is our-
Like two weeks from today or two weeks from tomorrow?
I don't know, but if you're leaning that way, you, you might as well tell Kristen or Dee.
Yeah, we might require like a two or three day grace period to, uh, compile the, you know, the final report, because it sounds like we're going to be having the hearing on the very deadline night. Okay.
And Chris Keefe has her hand up.
Okay.
Chris?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that the warrant will go to the printer on either April first or second.
So that's Monday or Tuesday.
Prior to our hearing. Well, well, prior to our hearing.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right.
Any other ideas?
You wanna write a summary?
And Lynn Ryan also. Lynn? You muted. There you go.
I have very unstable- I have very unstable internet access, so if I break up, let me know. Um, just had a couple of things I would like you to consider when you're considering the articles. When I re- reread seven twenty-three about the um, senior residential development, if you remove what you want to remove, it seems to me that there is no restriction on anyone under eighteen.
That is correct.
So if someone's fifty-five and the wife is forty-two and they have three children, they can move into the senior residential development?
That is correct. If the residential development accepts, um, money from the state for subsidized housing, you can't preclude them from having children.
Interesting. The other thing I wondered is on these citizens petition, is there residential agricultural property that abuts that property?
Yes, there is. There's houses-
Okay, cause otherwise it could be considered spot zoning.
Correct, yes. But there are other houses that were built along the, uh, this, they, they, they front River Road, but they're serviced by a common drive that goes off a river run. And those houses have been up for probably ten years, maybe?
Okay.
And the other side is also-
Carolyn, maybe you're saying they can't re-
Um, well, that's good to know, because that would certainly was a concern that I had. Um, and the property on the other side of it is also, are a true?
Seventeen ninety must be.
Yeah, must be. So.
Well, that's just something to look at.
Yep.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Bye, Lynn. Putting you back in. And Chris as well.
So, uh, getting back to it, it sounds like we would have to put something in force, uh, in the warrant requesting that they put that in as information you know, attended to, to that warrant article. We have to do that uh, by the opening of business on the first at the latest is what I heard from Chris.
Well, I presume it needs to get edited into the document before it goes to the printer. Right?
Yeah, that's why she said it was the first or the second, so I, yeah, so it, and it, it, it should probably be there earlier, but, uh, what I was hearing is the latest would be, you know, if they had it first thing in the morning on the first, and that would be pushing it perhaps.
Can we just write something and have it inserted or just?
That's fine. What's this we, white man?
And does, does the board need to vote? That is.
We probably should.
Or can the clerk just write it and submit it?
Um, I would say, I would authorize the clerk to write it and circulate it, um.
Yeah.
I know. That's gets squirrely. I mean, oh- I mean, all we're seeing though is that it says this, but it should say that.
No, no, we're talking about.
Sorry. Talking about signs.
Yeah, I think we're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about.
I mean, Jay, I'm I'm happy if you write, personally, I'm happy if if you write a a summary of it. Uh, you've been an advocate of it, but that's just my own personal feeling. I wouldn't object to your doing that and be authorized to do it and send it in.
How does the rest of us feel about that?
Um, I mean, it's going to just be the fax, ma'am, right? Not the opinion, not any opinion.
Um, that would be the intention. I think it certainly would be better if we all saw it and had a chance to edit it.
I mean, what I was going to say, because you're right, it gets a little squirrely, but my thought is if we ask you to send it around and the legal term term is non-abstante, then if nobody objected to something, you could just then go ahead and do it, which is you know, one way, one way to approach it. I I think, you know, given the constraints of time and everything, pass it along. It it's it's to the recorded official emails of all of us. And the end product is going to be published in the warrant. So, you know, I I I think it's okay to, if you get it out, we'll watch for it and turn it around quickly and understand we have to get it done by probably by the thirty-first to be kind to the people who are putting the thing together.
Right. Okay, I'll try to do that.
Okay.
Can I put pictures in it?
But no active videos, okay?
Are there ever pictures in that document? I don't remember.
Yeah, yes, there have been historical pictures and yeah.
There have been.
Yeah.
In the warrant?
In no, in the town report, sorry.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about. It's a town report. That's we're talking about putting something in the town report right now.
No, I was I was talking about putting something in the warrant because.
He was talking about putting this, he was talking about writing the summary for the art, the sign article for the warrant.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, because that's where people are going to be paying attention and wondering what it means and.
Yeah, sorry. No, no, I got. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was speaking about pictures that were in the town report.
Yes.
I guess I can find out.
Uh, yeah.
Well, what would you put a picture of? Like, I thought you were joking.
No, like, you know, that drawing that I made that we were looking at way back in the beginning.
Hmm, I'm not so sure the summary is where that belongs.
Right. I don't remember ever seeing anything like that. I mean, if you if you think about some of the proposals that we've had in there for various things like over fifty-five or something like that, we don't have any, you know, pictures of like elevations or pictures of, you know.
Right. If we want to do a handout to handout um, at town meeting with a picture and, you know, more words and stuff so that people can under have a clearer understanding of what they're voting on at town meeting.
But yeah, I think what, yeah, I think what we're talking about with the warrant is, you know, a couple of short paragraphs that describe what the purpose of it is sort of where the locations are and.
Right. I so we had conservation had some the rail trail article kicked back to us to make it shorter. So really just a couple of sentences.
Okay. If you look at the past stuff, it's no more than a couple of three, four sentences at the most.
Right.
Yeah, but like I said, a short paragraph. Yes.
Yep. Yep. Let's get chat GPT to write it.
Yep.
Yay.
And we can put together a, you know, a handout for town meeting because keep in mind it's the people who are there and can get that handout and have it in front of them who are going to do the voting.
Right.
And then when we give our little pitch that Tom was talking about, can we have media support for that? Can we show slides, videos, movies? Music?
We 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 have in the past, so I don't think any, any, there's no reason why we can't. You'd have to get permission from the moderator.
Yeah.
But you got to give them a heads up ahead of time so that you don't get a no on the floor.
Well, and and so everything's set up.
Yep.
And yeah, and so everything's set up. Yep.
Okay. I was just going to put a camera down by the one in the Hudson Center. Record a couple hours and play it full speed.
There you go. I'm still trying to figure out how I submit my expense for having two cocktails at Kiss and Kin and looking out the window and studying it for purposes of this bylaw, but
I think that the 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 psychiatric evaluation you had to go through afterwards because would be worth more than a couple of drinks.
Oh, yeah, you're probably right. You're probably right. Yep.
Yeah, that that one's pretty bad.
I will say we did have dinner there one night and I did pay enough attention to the sign as it changed that Joni at one point said, what are you looking at outside? I was like, oh, sorry, planning board stuff. I was checking out the sign anyway.
There's a new one on the building where Montero Electric is in Hudson that makes the other one that I used to rant about look tame and old fashioned. It's.
Where's that on Loa Main?
Yeah. Yep.
We'll have to ask him if it's bringing a new business in. Maybe the economic development commit committee should be engaged because of that.
You're just a troublemaker.
The town needs more business? Come on.
Right. And we're the the bylaw is just for municipal signs only, so it would be irrelevant.
Yeah, like I said, unless the town needs more business of some sort.
Right.
Selling merch and we could reduce our tax, our real estate taxes. Well, I don't think we have anything else on our agenda that I know of, Mr. Chairman.
Nope. Um, I I did. I did start to review. I got from Tim on Wednesday. The material on the underlay district and the intermunicipal agreements and so on, which I've begun to review. I had another project that I had to work on for church over the weekend, so I hadn't got a chance to look at it this past weekend, but I started on that and as I say, my understanding was that at the next meeting will, I I know we have other things on the agenda, but I think we'll be able to present a sort of summary report on the uses and the interaction between the underlying zoning and the overlay zoning, at least to get that in front of in front of the board, even if we don't have a long time to discuss it two weeks from now. Okay?
Okay, so that would be the same night as the hearings?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think we'll present maybe, you know, my aim was maybe to present a report, spend three or four minutes, five minutes just saying, you know, this is the orientation of what I'm giving you tonight and then you know, then we can discuss it, you know, further at the at the next meeting, but you know, people will have materials in front of them so they can really start to dig in on it. Okay?
Okay.
Did you have a chance to send the email to select board, Thomas?
I I sent it to the town administrator, but.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, Chris Keith has her hand up.
Okay. Can we hear from Chris?
Um, yes, I was. So, Thomas, is that in regards to what you were just talking about? Was that in regards to the mall?
Uh, that was actually in regards to what's what's it called? The.
So it was the mall, but it was for the.
The fun box installation, very temporary installation in one of the parking lots.
Okay, okay, that that was kind of why I logged on tonight. I just wanted to know whether you had made any decisions about.
Yeah, actually, I had sent something to, I had sent, well, with respect, that's not the mall. This is just the the fun box thing, which I think you guys have before you as well. Is that right, Chris?
Uh, I don't know of it yet. It it may be, but.
Okay, any anyway, what they want to do is to put together a temporary, you know, sort of bouncy castle carnivalish, low-key carnival thing in the in the parking lot. I mean, if it's before you, you'll have more details on that. Uh, they they came to us to ask us whether there was anything in the zoning bylaw that would affect that. And the note that I had sent to, well, this is about a week and a half ago to the town administrator was our finding that there was really nothing relevant in the zoning bylaw with respect to that. So there was nothing that allowed it. There was nothing that disallowed it. And so that therefore um, it should just be permitting of a public event, sort of like the things that happened at nineteen Carter, Chris?
Right.
Yeah, and that that's just the way that it should be handled and planning board is happy if you handle it along those ways. So that that was the message.
Okay, I I just was, um, you know, we've had several different things that have come forward uh, that they wanted to do at the mall, and I just wanted to make sure that it's okay with planning board, you know, with the and whatnot.
Yeah, that one is the only one that I can think of that would go to the selectman that wouldn't go through another process like rezoning. There's lots of pots on the fire there. You know, uh, obviously, the mall is looking for different use patterns to continue to support it. Marlboro is looking at changes to the underlying zone. So there's a lot of things happening, but none of those things would, I think, go to the selectmen directly, but but the uh, fun boxing would would definitely go to you and we wanted you guys to understand that you should treat it like an event licensing, like what happens at nineteen Carter.
Yes. Okay. All right. That was my basic question. Um, one thing, one other thing I did want to mention is uh, what's going on with the buses that are parked um, around Sears? And and whose responsibility is it to follow up on this?
Yes.
Good answer.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I I believe we're all about that clear on all of this.
I know. I'll just tell you that, um, I know Kristen has talked with the assessor. Um, the assessor is new. And she said that she has sent out excise tax bills for the buses. However, I think she may not understand that it's buses from all different towns.
Every time I go over there, there's more.
Yeah, and I and I think she may have sent out excise tax bills to the ones that are for the Burlins and Boylston schools, but I don't know about everybody else. So I just didn't know, is this something you wanted us to follow up on or are you following up on it?
It was it was never brought before us to begin with.
What's that?
It was never brought before us to begin with. No one brought anything to us to say we want to park buses down here.
Well, I think I know I've talked with Lynn Ryan and she's probably, she's on, I know, tonight.
Yeah.
And um, she has had, you know, conversations with, I believe it was Liz from the Solomon Pond Mall um, who just said that they have a contract that allows them to park at the mall.
And Peter Hoffman also has his hand up. I'm going to bring him in as well.
Okay.
Uh, so go on, Chris. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to let the chair know.
Yeah, I mean, I just am looking for direction. That's all.
Hey, Peter, how are you?
Not too bad. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So I can share some insight. The buses are there for on a month-to-month basis and leaving any moment now. Any moment now could be a month, could be a few months. They lost the contract. The Solomon Pond Mall lost the contract because um, they felt that the controversy that Molly predecessor, assessor created chased them off. And so they've got bought a piece of land, I think, in Stowe is being developed. And buses will be moving there. That's the latest I've heard. It's unfortunate because it represents a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of monthly revenue or annual revenue um, for the mall. So it's, it feels like it would be spinning wheels to send excise taxes in general, and especially since they're leaving to send the excise tax bills would be spinning wheels. I think we, that that's pretty much it. I could answer some questions perhaps.
Well, that's that's good news. I mean, at least an answer. Um, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, it's it's you're welcome. It's it's bad news because they're losing an important tenant and the town might have gotten the excise taxes had it been worked out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think we we may have been able to work something out, but I don't think anybody at the mall particularly wanted to talk to us about it.
No, Liz approached me and I introduced her to Molly and then the communication with Molly broke down. And now Liz was very much on top of it. Liz, the manager, was very much interested in resolving it. I wasn't on the phone call, so I can't speak more to that.
Well, I know the neighbors will be happy about the reduction in noise.
Right. Any other questions I might answer?
Yeah, thanks, Peter.
No, you're welcome.
Anything else?
No.
Right.
Right. You just asking me?
Yes, are you all set?
Yes, I'm all set. So are your hearings, are your hearings for your articles at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good.
Awesome. All right.
Any other timely items we need to discuss?
Maybe a motion to adjourn, but I withhold that until I give people a chance to respond to that question.
You're itchy, itchy to pull that trigger, aren't you?
I I am, you know, this is this is my birthday and I think.
Oh.
It's it's Tim's birthday, too.
That's where he is. He's not at.
I think that's, yeah.
His meeting was at the Olive Garden or someplace.
It's funny because some people said, can we take you out for a drink tonight? I said, no, I have a planning board meeting and the planning board can't excuse people on their birthdays because Tim and I have the same birthdays and it puts the quorum in
in question.
In question, so.
And I showed up on my birthday, so.
Yeah, exactly.
No quarter, no quarter.
What'd you say, Jay?
I think I did, too.
Yeah.
See how dedicated we all are?
We are indeed.
From Tim.
Special thing we do when it's your birthday on a meeting night.
Right?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, it was my birthday on the twenty-fourth of October, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Well, you know what I always say is that birthdays are like misfortunes. It's much nicer to celebrate other peoples.
Right?
Anyway, all right. So I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second and it's non-discussable, so therefore I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous to adjourn.